Good evening. I called this regular trustee meeting on July 16th, 2024 to order at 6:30 PM. All the role Engelman?
Here.
Asherall is here. Trustee Sweattick, fiscal officer Cathcartwood and chief Snatner all have excused absences. We also have chief Grossenbaugh in attendance and superintendent Mike Barry. We could please stand and honor the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Think we are better off tabling, we have two, two minutes to approve, but if we could just table those until the next meeting?
When Jack is back? Yes, that would be okay with me.
Okay.
Good idea.
Chief Grossenbaugh?
Thank you. Our request appropriations not to exceed $7,100 for items to outfit tanker 32 as outlined in the quote from 9/11 fleet and fire equipment. As we got the new tanker in, as we took two trucks and combined them into one and replacing 30 plus year old tanker, we're updating equipment that's been 30 plus years old on tanker or new tools because of how the tanker has been, is going to be used going forward.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Engelman. All in favor?
Aye.
Next one is a slight difference, shouldn't be rip bag, so I'm gonna read it as, with change in it. Request appropriations for $245.07. Price includes the return of the Akon brass monor for a crossfire monor top from Johnson Fire Equipment. So we got the, it's called a deck gun mounts to the top of the tanker to flow large for, large volume of water. We're returning it because the current tanker actually has the mounting bracket for this new monor. So we don't have to, we don't have to pay the extra money to get a new flange. It always comes with it, but the monor is just a little bit more money.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Engelman. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. And the one thing I did want to discuss with you before you scoot out is we are down to now our final round of interviews for our full-time fire candidates. And I wanted to talk with you and see your thoughts on, you know, with this being a full-time, you know, it's, it's a new position, it's a big investment for the township. Instead of just having me as the liaison be present for these interviews, your thoughts on having the, all, all the trustees present for interviews instead of just the liaison?
That's, in full-time positions, we don't have too many of them in the township. We just kind of did that with the zoning inspector. So I'm, that's a great idea. I mean, we crafted these positions and so.
I agree, and I think that we all, I think we all had different questions to ask also, and that's what made me start thinking about it. And you're right, we don't have very many full-time positions. So, you know, maybe that's something that, you know, to do right now with the full-time fire, but then also the next time there's police being interviewed. It's something that we might want to think about sitting in on. So that being said, I believe you had mentioned next Friday.
This coming Friday.
This Friday?
Yes, this Friday was when, when we talked on the phone, was this Friday. I was trying to move it.
I thought it was next Friday.
No, it was this Friday.
I can't do this Friday.
I can't do this Friday.
Then next Friday it is.
Next Friday?
Mm-hmm.
At 9:00 AM?
9:00 AM, yes.
Alright, so I will confirm that that will work for Jack and send Suzanne a request to schedule a special meeting for the purpose of hiring, I'm sorry, for the purpose of interviewing full-time firefighter candidates.
Okay.
On 7/26/24. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Does anyone have anything for Chief Grossenbaugh?
I want to thank Chief Brian Kepnoff, Chief Brian Seifert and Lieutenant John Hovin, who is a actual Hinckley resident, he works full-time Brunswick, city of Brunswick. They were on the first round of interview panel with Assistant Chief Barrett and Lieutenant Baxter. So we had a lot of experience and including a actual stakeholder holder from the community with Lieutenant Hovin, who's also a firefighter, so it was nice that he had the background in it. So I'd like to personally thank them.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Where were the other two fire chiefs?
Seifert is Seville and Kepnoff is Lafayette.
And then you said, who else?
Lieutenant John Hovin is Brunswick City.
Right, and then?
Our Assistant Chief Barrett and Lieutenant Baxter from our fire department. They were kind of the first ones to go through. We had, originally we started out with 12. We had a couple dropouts. And then we got down to seven. We're going to interview, move on to the five.
Okay, very good. Alright.
Very good.
Thank you.
I have one quick question. Richard Pearl. This was, I think this was the first Fourth of July with legal fireworks in Hinckley?
Last year was.
Last year was?
Last year was.
Did, any difference in fire response? None whatsoever?
There was, there was no hazards, no injuries.
No fires?
Uh, no, nothing, we had nothing.
Okay.
Yep.
Knock on wood, because they still have this weekend also to set them up.
Yeah, I mean, they do it year-round, 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 times it's.
But legally they have?
Legally, yes. Yes, no, there was no, no response, same as last year, no response. We had more responses, obviously, when I thought, when it was illegal because people complaining. We had one when Chief Potts was here down in Ridge Road that they had, it was all the consumer-grade fireworks, same thing, you know, they sell in Sharon or any of the other ones. And they had a large display set up and somebody called that in. We had to bring the fire marshal in and dispose of, dig a whole pit and dispose of it on July 5th on a hot summer day. But since then, everything's been legal. We've been
Good.
Very, very lucky.
And it was a good decision by the trustees.
We helped. To be continued.
That's all I have.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Your excuse.
Be safe, guys.
Mike?
How's it going tonight?
Good.
Two items on my agenda here for tonight. The first one is request for appropriations to cover additional costs from Lewis and Lamb Professionals for additional engineering on Bethany Lane at a cost of $1,725. Since we had to go back and we had extra funding, you know, we extended the project. So this is just their extra time that they had in the engineering costs. So for us to extend the project though.
Okay, so that was engineering, not concrete or for the contractor? Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Second thing is, oh, sorry.
Any discussion? Don't make me forget. Any discussion?
No.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Okay, second on my list is request safety items to be purchased for the service department and applied to the OTAR MORG grant not to exceed $1,000. These items are going to consist of like, like our safety glasses, rubber gloves, chainsaw safety equipment. We're looking at some lighting for some night work, updating our hard hats and then some high-visibility workwear. So it's just anything that's going to make, you know, our work zones and employees safer that, you know, we can apply for this grant. It's normally 500 and they raise it to 1,000, so.
So you have quotes for these items?
A lot of them is replacement items, but it's still something that, like Legal Myanmar, the talk we do just to keep a trail for the ORG grant for the applications, you know.
But I mean, you're just looking at $1,000.
Yeah.
Not $2,000 and then get.
No, no. I'll keep it as close as I can, so.
Right.
How often do you replace the hard hats?
Generally, I mean, like mine has, and mine's an older one, but it has a, like the stickers on them, like that'll have the color fades, like mine's red and then when they go to white, generally that's when you have to get rid of them when they're plastic, but it's been a while, it's probably been about two years, so it's time.
Okay.
It's about, you know.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
That's about all I have. I'm talking with TriMoore a little bit, they're thinking like September maybe for starting for Bethany? Like that's just like, depends on when the castings come in and, you know, when they can actually get out there. So we said, that's the last I'd heard, so once I get more of an update, I'll, you know, let the trustees know.
Are we gonna have to schedule a meeting also like we've done for Bailey Brook? Have letting people come in and?
I wouldn't, I mean, they've already been sent letters and I told them to contact me, you know, if they've had any questions. So I've only had one person, you know, contacted with a very simple question about just they were moving in and out and, you know. And it's not going to really, they said the days pushed back far enough to where they can get, you know, they're selling their house and stuff, so they should be good.
Very good, thank you.
So I want to thank you for picking up the Jeep and taking a look at it before next week. Needs an oil change and it needs probably a bit of cleaning out and tires were low.
Yeah.
And I don't know if anything with the break fluid needs to be done, but.
Well, we'll give it a service, a full PM service.
Yeah, we'll probably get on a regular schedule and, you know, Jack is back, we'll just kind of talk about.
Good thinking.
More formally instead of, oops.
No, yeah, that's understood.
Appreciate you doing that.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Thanks. Does anyone else have anything for Service Superintendent? You three doing it?
Thank you.
Now that we have our witnesses, we don't need you. And we bypassed this, so I am going to move to pay the bills in the amount of $145,629.70.
Second.
Seconded by Engelman. All in favor? Aye.
And did we vote on that OTAR thing?
No. You didn't do it yet, did you?
Did we, we talked, because I asked questions, no, we didn't. So move to.
I, no, we did vote on that. We did, because I, we voted on it after, we can do it again if you want to, but I thought we did it after I asked about the hard hat replacements.
Oh, you made the motion, that's right, you did. I was going to. That was only a couple of minutes ago. We're good.
Okay. Cindy?
Well, since you were doing a fiscal thing, let me jump to the OPWC. This is going to be number one. This is to amend the township certificate. So motion to adopt resolution number 071624-01, which approves the submission of a request to amend the Hinckley Township Certificate of Estimated Resources to the Medina County Honor to reflect the additional OPWC loan grant of $291,500.
Second. Any discussion? I will call the role. Engelman?
Yes.
Asherall, yes.
Okay. So now jumping back to zoning. This is our annual renewal for the software permitting for the zoning office, I work. So I moved to request appropriations for annual renewal of the I work zoning software program at a cost of $1,500.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Moving along?
Moving along, cemetery deeds. We've got a few of them to sign if I can get two witnesses. There's four of them, so.
You didn't know you were actually going to be?
Yeah, there you go.
Called up?
Thank you.
Four total?
Yeah. So I have to.
Date?
The date, 16th. Day of July.
If you can each sign, each one?
Yeah.
Under the witness.
There are four different people. The 16th.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I guess last time we made a motion to adopt the social media policy, but we need actually a resolution to make it, I guess, like.
Official?
Official. So this is going to be number two. So this is, it reads the same way as last time. There's no changes or anything, but just the resolutions instead of a motion. So this is a resolution to adopt the Hinckley Township Social Media Policy effective July 16th, 2024. Resolution number 071624-02. And I'm going to read this because I think, I don't know if I have to or not, but I will. One, all posts on Facebook will be considered the primary record and the maintenance and maintained in accordance with the township record retention schedule. Two, all topics to be posted shall be agreed to by the Board of Trustees. Three, events, example, Fourth of July parade shall be created as an event. Four, all commenting and messaging functions shall be turned off. Five, all posts shall be shareable, allowing for maximum circulation.
Second. Is it July 16th or should it be the day that?
It's today when we're making.
It's gotta be today.
Resolution.
Okay, okay. Um, I will call the role. Engelman?
Yes.
Asherall, yes. No.
Okay. Um, the next thing I wanted to just go over, there was a stakeholder meeting last Thursday. ODOT regarding the 71-271 planning study that they are conducting. And so I'm just providing some information at the outcome of that meeting. Of the surveys that were mailed to the households, 146 ratings were obtained. And so there's a study area that they outlined along those corridors that they're looking at, not just 71-271, but also some intersections nearby. So 146 ratings were obtained and 217 comments. Of the responses received, 53% of the responses said no to any new builds related to the 71-271 interchange. And then also of the responses received, no build was the preferred choice on every intersection that they presented. And there was a number of intersections and they do have a website, see where some of them are, but. However, there were about 15 attendees at the stakeholder meeting and ODOT wanted a consensus from the group to take off all the 71-271 build options off the table going forward. There was a Hinckley resident attending who kind of pressed on regarding the semi-truck traffic on Ledge Road, where she lives. And likewise, I voiced my concerns over the amount of semi-traffic on both Ledge and Ridge Roads. And also talked about how 20 years ago or so, the trustees petitioned ODOT to do something when there was less of a build-out. So ODOT agreed to keep one option open for further analysis that was the least intrusive. I'll call the slow curve going from 271 South to 71 North moving forward. So that's northbound, because, you know, again, most of those semis are going northbound to get off at different exits on 71. So ODOT wanted to pursue the intersection analysis. Again, no build was a preferred option, but they wanted to pursue the next preferred option. And so they presented charts with existing crash data, changes in crashes based on the alternative bid and various cost-benefit ratios. And for an understanding of the crash data, all, just for analysis, all the intersections that they discussed had between less than 1 to 10.5 crashes per year. And so that's just the number. ODOT requested the attendees that were there to review all the alternatives and indicate whether to not move forward on those alternatives based upon this data they presented, to potentially move forward or to go ahead and move forward. So the latter two options, move forward or potentially move forward, were charted on a whiteboard with a map of the areas being studied. At this point, some people left the room, so there were less than 15 people that were actually doing this survey. So as we, to summarize then what that outcome was, the builds, which consisted of adding turn lanes on some of these intersections. So we're talking to Remson and State Route 3, we're talking about 94 Ridge and, what's that road there, Remson also?
Ledge?
No, by 271.
Oh, Rebsen.
Yeah, it's Remson also. So that, those were like the more preferred options because, number one, they were low cost. I mean, 60,000, maybe a couple hundred thousand. The builds, which consisted of creating roundabouts, were not favored. So all the rest of the options were to create roundabouts and there were a lot of different configurations, especially in the area of 271 and State Route 94 and, and some other areas. And, and with a pretty hefty price tag, hefty, you know, $3 million per roundabout in that range or more. So anyway, that's kind of where that is. They're going to continue to do some further analysis and all the data wasn't complete. You really have to look at the numbers to understand what their analysis is really based on. So there will be another stakeholder meeting in September and we'll kind of go from there. So just kind of wanted to give you an update, but I think the, the message that they heard loud and clear is people were not interested in, in roundabout constructions. Anyway, that was that.
Thanks for the recap.
Yeah.
Thanks for going. I went to the first one, I could not go to that one, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for going and bringing back the information. That's all you have?
Um, that's all I have on the agenda. I did want to, since I've had to deal with our mail system, our Google mail system, trying to reach out to the person who administrates that, who I know is a volunteer and I definitely appreciate that. Anybody who volunteers or time to do anything, it's definitely helpful. But gaining access, you know, in a timely fashion, to me, I'm just wondering whether, just like we did with our website and other things, whether we should consider adding our Google mail administration?
To the website?
That person used to maintain our website.
Yes.
Back before we moved to a new website.
Correct.
Which is now managed by somebody else.
Correct.
So I'm just wondering whether we should do the same with our email system, whether one of our current IT vendors could perform that function for us so that we can have more local and immediate access for changes that may need to be made. So I don't know if you can, if you know whether, like, who we use, like Lighthouse?
Lighthouse.
BNT, if they do that or whether there's somebody?
I would reach out to Lighthouse. I'll, I'll reach out to Lighthouse tomorrow and see if that's a serv-, I don't even know if that's a service that they provide and how much it is. I, I don't really know anything about this, because so, is this?
All I know is.
Do you think that this is something Lynn?
It's a possibility Lynn could do this. I don't see why not. I mean, that's, that's a possibility, I didn't even think about that.
Touch base with Lynn?
Mm-hmm.
And I, it would not be BNT, I mean, possibly Proximity, who does the website?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know who these companies are, so I'm just kind of.
Um, let me reach out to all of them and I will send you and Jack a recap of my conversations.
Okay.
And what, what I find.
Okay, appreciate that.
How much that would be, because that's something that's been discussed, I, ever since I've been here, we've been discussing the Google mail because now we have to pay for it, that used to be free. All of those accounts used to be free and then it started that you have to pay for them and then the price went up and then now we're even paying for these accounts of suspended because we can't delete them because of records retention, which that's, it's not a huge amount of money, but I mean, it all adds up, so let me see what I can find out and I will report back to you.
Okay. Alright, thank you, appreciate it.
Did, were you able to get the emails set up with?
I have not heard back. I have sent two emails and I haven't had a response, so.
I will send him an email.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know if I'm going to get it, I don't know if I'll get a response, but I mean, he's used to getting emails from me. So I will send an email also, just because we want that set up by Monday.
Yes, we do.
Okay. I will copy you.
Okay.
On, on my, he travels a lot, so let me see what I can do, but I'll also reach out to these other companies also.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, I appreciate it. And that's it for me.
Okay. Um, I wanted to see the thoughts on scheduling a special meeting on August 8th? Is that a Friday, a Thursday or a Friday? Um, you know, I, I know I gave you and Jack all the information with the single hauler bids, what the township used five years ago and also what the surrounding communities sent to us a couple of weeks ago. Not sure if you've had an opportunity to dig through that yet?
Actually, I have. The last two days I have read those two bids that you gave. Exciting reading. I did fall asleep a couple of times through it.
Oh.
But.
That's going to be on my list of things to do when we're traveling and.
Well, there's a lot of detail and so there's, there's a lot of work to be done, I think, just to structure.
So versus actually doing this in a regular trustee meeting, an evening meeting, I was thinking this might be something that would be ideal for a work session meeting for us to work through and to see if you are available on Thursday, August 8th at 4:00.
Yes, that is, that's Thursday, yep.
Okay.
That would work for me. Do you need a motion or you want to wait till you confirm with Jack or? Want to set the meeting?
I don't think I need a motion for a special meeting, do I? Just needs to be, we just need to agree.
You just need to agree.
We just need to agree and it's a work session, so if we schedule it for the purpose of a work session, we can discuss anything, we just can't vote on anything. So I'm kind of assuming that this is going, and I don't even know if that will get us ready to, be ready for the meeting following that, to put this out, but I feel it's a good start to go there and maybe have something that we can send to the prosecutor also.
Right.
Because it's not going to be a quick process, I'm sure. Okay. Um, I would like to thank everybody who came out for our Fourth of July Parade. Minnehaw Water, Hinckley Preparatory Academy and Brunswick Chick-fil-A. Also our fire department and police department for your assistance and to our residents. It was a lot of fun to see all the kids out there with their bikes decorated and four-wheelers and golf carts. So looking forward to doing that again next year.
It was a fun family morning.
It was, it was hot.
For the kids.
It was hot.
It could have been hotter.
This is true, but.
It was a little cloudy in the morning, so it helped.
Yeah.
As soon as that sun broke through.
Yeah. Yeah, and, um, the, the principal from Hinkley Prep and I were already talking about, you know, for next year, what, some things that we wanna do differently, some things that worked really well, so. Thank you to everyone who came out and supported that. Um, and then a reminder that our next movie night, sponsored by First Day School Supplies, will be August 17th. Um, the movie that was voted on by the community, it is Sing, and that will be in Bronzers Park. Um, and as we discussed the last meeting, I already did create an event for that. And then on, on social media, and then we are going to have a second community shred day. We did that last year also, and that left a lot of people asking when we will do it again. That's gonna be August 31st. We will have a, um, community shred day, which will be free to our residents, and that will include, um, paper shredding, electronic shredding, and also medical waste shredding. So that's a new service that we have this year. That will be at Hinkley Preparatory Academy.
Oh, okay.
And the information's on the website for, for all of this. And that is all I have. Anything else?
No, I think we are good.
Anybody from the public? Okay, in that case, I move to adjourn at 7:02.
Second.
Seconded by Engelmann. All in favor? Aye.